Great. Well, I would like to call to order the June 30th Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can I have a roll call attendance, please?
Cortez present.
Davis present.
Hughes present.
Morse present. And Mr. Bonin will not be attending this evening. Are you gonna, I think we can, we can muddle through without our dear friend, Mr. Bonin. So, under Chairman's announcements, I, well, the Board of Selectmen received a letter from the Oktoberfest Committee. I'd like to read the letter in, and we also have Tony, who's the chairman for the Oktoberfest Committee, as part of the meeting. It is, let me see, dated June 29th, 2020. Greetings, members. The COVID-19 pandemic has affected all aspects of daily life in our community, our state, and our country. Planners and organizers of community events such as ours have devoted lots of time attempting to develop plans to maintain such events during these times, and have been unable to offer truly safe solutions which will protect the patrons and their families. Some, such as Brimfield and Woodstock Fairs, have already canceled their fall again, fall events. The open and closed community nature of our event and venues does not lend itself to proper social distancing and other protective measures needed to provide such protections to our citizens as defined by the CDC and other medical experts. Even if such measures and restrictions could be identified and instituted, the small size of our committee and limited resources available make enforcement of the safety measures and restrictions impossible. Based on these conditions and out of an abundance of caution, it is with much regret, much regret that we must cancel our plans to host the 2020 Oktoberfest. We love our event and do not come to this decision lightly, and no one is more disappointed in this decision than the members of the committee, who voted unanimously to forego the 2020 event in the interest of health and safety of our community and to our families. Please be assured that the committee will be working hard on planning the return of the beloved festival for the 2021 season. Thank you for your understanding and helping keep our community and citizens safe. Signed, Tony St. Pierre, Chairman. Tony, the floor is yours, my friend.
Okay. Like that, like I covered in that letter, that was a really hard decision to do. We spent quite a few meetings discussing it, trying to come up with a plan, and there's just no way, with the current conditions and the virus out there, that we can take this event the way that we do it, because it, near to the event, people are there, they're enjoying each other as, you know, for, as part of the season. There is just no way we can guarantee, you know, being able to do this with restrictions. You know, we're, we're, we're upset. We, we tried to do this, but we just cannot do it. We do promise, however, that we will come back twice as strong next year, next season, and, you know, hopefully, this will all be back, you know, quiet back then.
I don't have any questions, Dave? Anything?
No questions, no. Thank you for your hard work. I'm sure that was difficult for you guys, Tony. Appreciate everything you've done in the past, and we'll get over this bump in the road, and we'll, we'll be bigger and better next year.
It'll be bigger and better next year.
Mr. Hughes, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I just think it's a wise decision. It's unfortunate. I think that's what you have to do.
It's what, it's what everybody else is doing. Everybody that has these kinds of festivals can't figure out how to do it properly either. And, and the biggie is about one step of closing also. You know, hold them back a little bit, they're not going to be able to pull it off either.
See, I believe they announced today, Tony, that they're, they're, they're gonna cancel.
Really?
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
We thank you for your support, and we'll come back out of next year. Bigger and better. Bigger and better.
All right. Thank you, Tony.
Thanks, Tony.
Thanks.
All right. That's all I had for Chairman's announcements. Unfortunately, it wasn't a fun one.
Nope.
But I know the community looks forward to that event every year, and rain or shine, it always seems to be a pretty good-sized event, so I look forward to see what 2021 looks like. So, we're on to our first agenda item, which is vote on annual appointments of board and committees with expiring terms and possible votes. Suzanne was kind enough to throw together a quick memo on it, our reappointment. Everyone wants to be considered for reappointment except for the following, which are highlighted in red. That would be the Cable Advisory Committee, Robert Wormy, and leaves three openings. The Cultural Council, Catherine Anderson. In order to secure grants, the committee must have a minimum of five members. They are currently seeking candidates. Let me see. And then openings are, all of the openings are posted on our website, on Cable and the Municipal Building Board in the hallway. Cable Advisory has three. Capital Improvement has one department head and one, one citizen at large. Concom has one. Cultural Council has at least one. Employee Insurance Advisory Committee needs one non-school union employee rep, one cafeteria collective bargaining unit rep, and the Board of Health needs one person. Is that about right?
I note with...
Chairman, I'd like to continue to roll this along. The people already on the boards continue until they're, any successes were appointed, but it'd be nice to see some of these people in person and give a little more opportunity for some new people to volunteer.
I agree, and it gives a chance for some of these committees that need people to find some decent candidates.
Yeah.
So, I accept moving it along. Anybody have any issues or concerns with that?
None whatsoever. I just want to note for the record, the pride and dedication that Mr. Bonin, who's not here tonight, has shown to the Central Mass Regional Planning Board.
Well, wait a minute.
He's stuck to that like glue, and I, I think it speaks volumes.
Can we, can we just reappoint Tim to that Regional Planning Board now?
I thought we had appointed him for the entire extended term.
I think that we have, but it, it may serve to have that reinforced via an official vote.
I, I think that's an important thing to do, and I think we should take a moment to really thank Selectman Bonin for his commitment and dedication to planning. We're lucky to have him.
I, I think...
Make him, again, once again, to sit on the Regional Planning.
I think all of Central Mass is lucky to have him, Mike. I'd expand that. He's certainly a leader in that field.
So...
I can check in that.
Well, it's, so is this a motion for Selectman Bonin to serve as the Central Mass Regional Planning Committee representative for Douglas, for his entire term as a selectman?
So moved.
You hear me, Ed?
So moved.
Second.
So, the motion has been made and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Cortez, an enthusiastic eye.
Davis even more enthusiastic.
Hughes very enthusiastic.
Morse also extremely enthusiastic about it, and I, I think we all should, you know, take a moment when we do have Mr. Bonin back in our presence to thank him profusely for his hard work and dedication for Central Planning, you know, Central Massachusetts Planning Committee.
In fact, I would go a step further, Mr. Chairman. I think we could plan some way of honoring him officially.
I, you know what?
To the meeting.
I will ask Suzanne to draft a certificate of appreciation for all of his hard work on CMRPC.
I think that's a great idea.
I'm sure there's a wonderful college textbook on Euclidean planning.
There, you know what? We will find one for him.
That handy-dandy reference for "planning in action."
So, we'll, we'll make sure that we present him with his certificate of appreciation next week.
That's great.
And this is the key to why attendance is so important as a selectman.
Not that he needs the certificate. I think he gets enough personal gratification, but it's a nice frosting on the cake sort of thing. Give it to him.
What, what I'm afraid of is that Tim's gonna show up in the meeting three times and overturn the vote.
Oh, my.
All right. So, all except for the CMRPC is being moved along?
Correct.
We will go into agenda item number two, which is a request from Fragile X Research Foundation. Ellen Scala had asked if the town could shine teal lights on the municipal center and common on July 22nd to show support for International Fragile X Awareness Day, which is autism and intellectual disabilities. We checked with the Common Preservation Society, and there are no lights at the common. As for the municipal center, the organization had lights they could let us borrow, but they're not the type that we can use. Seeing as we don't have teal lights available to us, I'd like to put some kind of acknowledges, acknowledgement up on our website, and she stated that she would be very grateful for any acknowledgement the town is able to do.
I think that's a, a very good way of, of addressing the issue. We don't really have the ability to do what she requested, so this is the next best thing, you know, putting a notice on the website. To be frank, it, it may attract more attention, so I'd, I'd agree with that.
Okay. Maybe what we can do is try and put a placeholder in, so we have better advance notice for next year.
Right.
So, we are able to actually get the, the teal lights as she had requested. So, I would entertain a motion as such for posting on the town website.
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing as none, roll call vote, please.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye.
Hughes, aye.
Morse, aye.
I'd move to approve the minutes from the meeting dated June 23rd, 2020.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye.
Hughes, aye.
Morse, aye. Which brings us to the Administrator's Report and COVID-19 Update. The floor is yours, Mr. Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, just to call your attention, on your list of appointments, there is a list of Town Councils. So, I just would be remiss if I didn't point out that you have the opportunity each and every year to review the performance of council and to determine whether you're satisfied or not. I'm not bringing this up because I have any particular recommendation to make, only that it is a very important job. Each of those three roles, Labor Council, Land Use Council, and our General Council. So, just to bear in mind that that is up and is part of the list that you have, I would like to only state for the record, because I don't know how many people who are eligible may be listening, I doubt anyone, but the Employee Advisory Committee for Health Insurance is very important. It's especially important that collective bargaining units be represented on the board. They provide the feedback of their members to me as I go to Strategic Health Group board meetings and make decisions on behalf of the trust with my two fellow board members regarding the way our coverage is gonna work now and going into the future. So, it's the only really rock-solid benefit that the town provides, other than legally mandated vacation time, and therefore, especially given its value and the demands it puts on the take-home pay of our employees who share in the premium costs. It behooves them to make sure they're represented in that conversation going forward. I want to point out, since you just did minutes, that we are likely gonna post the minute-taker position, because it's our understanding that the note-taker, our minute-taker who works for many different boards and commissions in the town, including the Board of Selectmen, FinCom, and others, is gonna move on to a different position and won't have time to do this anymore. She's extremely accurate and efficient, and that has been a bonus to the town, because it's an hourly task, and the longer it takes, the more expensive it is. So, I'm really grateful for her service to the town, and that job will be posted pretty soon. Our other postings that are out there include, I believe we have positions in the fire department, so we are actively looking, as an employer at this point, to fulfill a couple of vacancies. Late this afternoon, we received confirmation...
Bless you.
Representative McKenna, that the House has enacted its Chapter 90 bond legislation for $200 million. Douglas is slated to receive $363,912. And that is, right now, the only source of funding the town has for road and bridge projects. The current year, the year we're in, is largely spoken for, for the Cedar Street Bridge, because that we need to supplement the grant, the half-million-dollar grant that community development obtained, with almost all of our Chapter 90 award to be able to do that project. It's a, for such a small thing, it's a very complicated project, just in terms of measuring the land, doing the takings, assembling it all, sightlines engineering, but most importantly, the replacement of the bridge itself, which is gonna be upgraded to allow more water that naturally flows through, to flow through in a natural manner. So, but that is next year's award, 363912. In connection with that, the pavement management study that we've been talking about for a while has been completed. So, we're just looking to backfill now the priorities, which are gonna be some combination of traffic flow, school bus usage, snowplow coverage, all the rest of it. And that limited budget, in this day and age of COVID and economic disruption, may be all that we have, and it's very sobering, so if you did every single project you needed to do, just to get all your roads to, to a good serviceable condition, it could take almost 50 years at this pace. So, obviously, as we go along, wise decisions can be made. There may be some things that just don't need to be improved to that level, there may be some cost-effective means, but I just want to remind everyone who cares about this issue that best practices have shown, that's a little bit counterintuitive. Priority one is to take care of the best roads you have.
So they don't get worse.
Do the crack sealing, stop the bleeding, keep them up and running, and then you pick off your major projects as funding becomes available and as your priorities dictate. So, we are hoping that within the Chapter 90 allocation for next year, that we would certainly have enough to do the necessary crack sealing on the better roads in town to preserve them for the long term. They extend roadway life for a fair amount of time, and it buys you time to deal with some of the other priorities. Not to mention the Cedar Street Bridge, but...
Not that it's been in the news before or anything like that.
In connection with the lawsuit that was filed against the town, it doesn't necessarily involve the bridge itself, but the controversy surrounding ownership of the bridge and whether said bridge can be closed by private individual action, parking a vehicle across it, and the resulting arrest. The United States District Court for the District of Massachusetts has granted the town of Douglas defendant summary judgment.
Excellent.
And as with all findings of a court related to a summary judgment, it is entertaining reading. So, I have copies that I proffer to members of the board who are physically present, because there are lots of uses of fancy Latin terms like "in toto."
Interolla.
Which is nice to read in a summary judgment opinion. But needless to say, while the plaintiff could appeal, it would be unwise use of money to do that. We also received recently, the inspection dates are early June, but I believe we only received this in the last couple of days, is a stormwater inspection report provided to the town by Comprehensive Environmental Incorporated, and this reviews all of our best management practices around stormwater management and, you know, the different stormwater management assets that were put in place in all around the town, largely as a result of subdivision development. And while all of the town's BMPs are in fair-to-good condition, there's quite a few of them that require, that are in fair condition, that require minor maintenance. And there's some 66 pages, but I just want to emphasize that the pavement management report, this stormwater system report, together provide a fairly significant basis for the work planning of the Highway Department going forward, as these are all assets of the town, and they have now all been inspected, prioritized, and the specific action items associated with each have been outlined. So, add to that the forestry demands, as you drive up and down the roads and you notice that National Grid is gonna be doing a lot of work, and we're gonna be helping them, and the dam safety management report associated with Gilboa Street is the other maintenance item. Again, removal of vegetation, you know, making sure things don't block the dam, all minor, but all need to be done, because if they're not done in a timely fashion, 10, 15 years from now, you'll be sorry you didn't do it, because you'll have significant problems all around town.
Sounds like Ferno and company are about to be busy.
Well, they, they knew it anyway. This is the structure around it, so we'll, we'll be posting these reports so that people can see what lies ahead, we're not just talking about it, but we're trying to plan for it. Lastly, we've been working on the budget and, and year-end issues all week. I think the public should engage in reviewing and trying to understand the guidance provided by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education with respect to reopening schools in the fall. Tomorrow is July 1st. By August, the School Department has to file with DESI three plans, not one plan, but three plans. What would you do if all the kids come back? What would you do if everybody's on remote learning? And what would you do if the only way you could have school was to blend remote learning with in-person presence, in-person instruction? There's a lot of planning and a lot of cost associated with making those plans happen. I know we have a brand-new superintendent, but it's, time is of the essence, and my personal view, this is a hugely important and potentially disruptive issue, not only for the students, but for the families and their work schedules and their ability to pull this off. And for that reason, the process requires a little bit more than being posted on some random school committee meeting agenda and dealt with quickly. It needs to be transparent, publicized, and feedback gathered and acted upon, because this is not the kind of thing that people will accept being imposed upon them if they haven't participated. So, you know, with, with probably six weeks to pull all of this off, get it approved, and get ready to actually hit the ground running at the end of August is a very tight timeframe. All I can offer is that, to the extent the town can be helpful to the School Department trying to identify things, but really, this is their baby, because there isn't a lot that we can do. You know, there may be some funding coming their way on an allocation basis from the state of federal funds, but at the end of the day, there needs to be a budget, and they need to be able to live within it, because there is not a lot of other resources available to address these issues. So, having said that, Mr. Chairman, that is the conclusion of my report.
How did our chapter money, I'm sorry.
Chapter money?
Our chapter money. How did our Chapter 90 money this year compare to previous years, if you know?
I think this year, we were a little bit higher than the number that was talked about for next year. I think this year, we're right around 386, if I'm not mistaken.
So, what about an eight, eight percent decrease? Is that...
A little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah. I say a little bit. It's a math problem, right? So, maybe it's 20 grand off of 363, it's seven and a half, eight percent.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we can, this is the last part of your report. It will be in front of us on the 7th, so perhaps we can do some coaxing and urging of better participation with the community as it comes to planning, as far as the school is concerned. The only other thing that I have, since it's open session for topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of said meeting, I had a couple of people talk to me about, and actually, even my better half observed it, is getting the Safety Committee to take a look at putting a crosswalk in between the Highway and Fire Departments and family convenience, because people do cruise down through there, and the firefighters and the highway guys in the mornings are trying to go get their coffees, and so I'd like to task Mr. Ferno to engage the Safety Committee to sit down and look at the feasibility behind that. And then, if it all works out well regarding lines of sight, give him the go-ahead to implement said crosswalk. And if he needs some help from, like, Central Mass planning on that, I'm sure Tim would make himself available to lend his expertise on planning. That's about all I have. Mr. Cortez, you got anything?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Davis, you got anything?
You've covered, you've covered everything.
I'm a big guy. I can cover a lot.
Good evening, gentlemen. How are you tonight?
Good. How are you?
Good. This is open session now?
Uh, it is, but only if you're gonna give us some of that wine.
You're not supposed to see all of that. I'm hiding from the back. Well, I'm here to ask if you have received my formal request, my former article, to see if that's gonna be put on for the town, moving for the, for the town to hold on.
So, I did see, have the rest of the board had an opportunity to review the requests that came regarding a buffer zone being implemented as a bylaw?
Yes. I mean, insert it underneath the, uh, as, insert it as state, underneath the laws and regulations as how many HCA's are allowed in the town. So, it would be, see, a buffer zone shall be established at a distance of no less than 12 hundred feet, property line to property line for retail cannabis location. The buffer zone will be served to promote safety and alleviate traffic congestion and patron congregation in the town. It's all about safety, safety, and safety.
Understood. I don't know if the rest of the boards had a chance to kind of read over the proposed language and then it...
I've not read the proposed language. I did receive your email, and I knew that you were looking to have this established, but I didn't have a chance to review the language.
I, I can tell off of the, the cuff. I understand the reasoning and purpose behind it, but there was a reason also as to why we chose the Board of Selectmen being the licensing authority as opposed to establishing marijuana zones.
Right.
Because zoning can get tricky and difficult, and I believe even our legal counsel, they came in and gave us advice on that, said that the cleanest, easiest route for us to get licensing established in the town of Douglas was to make it under the Board of Selectmen's purview. My other plot, thought behind it is, is we don't have said buffer zone for any other retail establishment within Douglas, like, not for restaurants, not for liquor stores, so...
I understand that, but this is, is not a restaurant. I understand that, but this is not a restaurant, this is not a liquor store. This is an entire industry that's totally different, that hasn't even been opened in your town. There's other towns that I have my consultant on here, that has worked on many of these, but what it all comes down to is whether you want it or don't want it, I think that it should go before the town, at the annual meeting and have the town vote on it. Because right now, I'm in front of planning, and planning is having an issue right now with how many parking spaces and if people are going to park on the road, and should we erect signs, and should we, what should we do to alleviate that? And if you have somebody that's 500 feet away from me, what are you going to do with that one too? So it's already been brought up in planning that, how much business this is going to do? And if we're all stacked on top of each other, what are we going to do with 1,000 cars? If I'm doing 500 cars an hour, what are we going to do with 1,000? I have 50 spaces on my property, I can go up to 75, I already discussed that with them, but, you know, we talked about this back in April. April 14th is when I came before you for this, and it was discussed that you would look into it, circle back around with me, get it on an agenda, and see where it goes.
I'd say that if you have 50 or 75 spaces, if you're getting 500 cars an hour, we're going to have a problem anyway regardless of whether or not we have a buffer zone.
The people move in and out within 10 minutes. We went through that with planning. The last, we're going back before planning on the 15th.
To me, a total of 500 cars a day, not an hour.
Okay, I misunderstood her then.
Sorry, yeah. 50 an hour, 50 an hour or more. So now, this is not pizza, this is not, this is not, this is something that's totally out of, nobody in the town knows how this is going to work. And we need to, we need to proceed with caution, we need to proceed with regulations, and we need to proceed with people that are going to be compliant every day.
I don't think compliance, yeah, I don't think compliance is an issue yet because we don't have anything to comply with, or not, nothing, but in the idea, in the zone of buffer zones, I don't think we have anything to comply with. I, I'm going to turn to the town administrator, as I almost always do, and ask, and ask, what opinion, if any, do we have from town council? I think the chairman raised, what is the key issue here? And that is that the selectmen were going to be the deciding factor, and if my terminology is wrong, correct me.
No, that's true. So what the proposal is, is to, you would still be the deciding factor.
Okay.
The proposal is to amend the general bylaw, not the zoning law.
I misunderstood, I thought she wanted to go to town meeting.
No, to amend the bylaw.
Okay.
Would require town meeting action, but the bylaw she's seeking, asking you to think about amending, is the bylaw that puts you in control of the licenses. This is a, everybody's between a rock and a hard place. There are other towns that have a buffer zone. Douglas doesn't, doesn't have it with any business, so yeah, we do have a bunch of businesses in the same line of work, all within close proximity to one another. And yes, it does have an impact on traffic, frankly, because the street parking down, in the so-called downtown Douglas area, and at any given time during the day, you have to slow way down because there's people moving about. And it was me that raised, just flagged for everybody that there is an issue on Davis Street with the proximity of businesses that might be in the same line of work, and whether or not that was an appropriate setup. Because our thought was that we want licensees to be successful so they generate revenue for the town. But the other problem, and I think this is a significant issue, is that the decision was not to make marijuana zones. So any place in the zoning code where retail establishments are allowed, marijuana retail establishments are allowed. We don't have much of this in Douglas at all. So if you put a 1,200-foot buffer, you're basically saying that those few small blocks of territory in the town that are zoned for retail establishments are now going to be pretty much hands-off because they're just not that big. Now, retail establishments of any kind are allowed in the industrial zone, but only by special permit from the zoning board, which is, you know, the case on Webster Street, by the way, that's the property the town seeks to sell, will be sold with the caveat that you need to get a special permit from the zoning board to operate the business of any kind, whether it's cannabis or anything. So, except for fast food, for some reason, you can put a Popeyes out there as a right. Anyhow, that's the conundrum that you're back and forth between.
So a buffer zone could have the effect, if I'm going to reword what you say here, of taking some of our retail zones and limiting their usefulness because you can only have one business of that type in that retail zone because of the fact that they're relatively small in size?
Right. And it also, I guess another argument that should be on the table is, why would it matter necessarily whether that's a cannabis business across the street or a life bait and tackle shop that generates just as much traffic? Those considerations are largely left to the elected planning board of the town of Douglas to figure out as part of site plan review and their ongoing conversation with applicants, especially when those applicants may be seeking variances or other forms of relief. You can't know what might end up across the street one way or the other, so how much, maybe it'll be trucks hauling loan, which while there may not be as many trucks, they're heavier and slower and have an impact on traffic as well. So that's another consideration that's out there. That's the purpose of town meeting, is to go over these policies. The question is whether or not, you know, the warrant is open, and whether or not you want to put it on or if it has to be petitioned on.
Mr. Chairman, I think, even without a formal adoption of a zoning amendment, the Board of Selectmen in their licensing power can consider a buffer, de facto buffer, not have everybody cram together. I think that would be something that we could decide when we're reviewing any license applications.
Yeah.
And I think that came up, that has come up in the past, so you don't necessarily need a formal structure, but the reasoning behind it still could be implemented as part of our licensing process, I believe.
So on a case-by-case basis, Mr. Davis?
Yeah. It's a factor to consider.
I like that idea better because I'm not a lawyer by any stretch of the imagination, but the way this is playing out in my head is that if we establish a buffer zone, all of a sudden, Harry's, Gregory's, and Douglas House are in direct conflict of the buffer zone.
Right.
And then what do we do to existing businesses? Tell them, you know, two, you guys have to leave?
Well, this is tailored to cannabis, but...
But that builds conflict when tailoring it because we don't have a cannabis zone.
But I think your point was excellent, that if you have bait and tackle, a convenience store, Joe's Trucking across the street, if it's 50 cars an hour, to use the lady's figure, it's 50 cars an hour regardless of what they're doing. I, you know, if we were going to look at a buffer zone, I would think to take the chairman's statement and make it even bigger, which he probably didn't mean to, I think you'd have to look at a more overarching one for all retail. And the lawyer in me, although I am no expert at all on municipal planning or anything, I think this would lead to trouble. I just, I kind of smell trouble around the corner with this.
But we can establish buffering as part of the licensing itself. But I mean, here's the question...
I think you have something, I think you have to have something in the bylaws that thinks that you have the ability to implement a buffer, because if not, somebody's going to come before you and say, well, that's not, that's not in your bylaws, why would you put it to me and tell me I have to have a buffer in this parking government? So there would still have to be something in the bylaws that says that you govern that buffer zone on a face-to-face basis.
To Hal's, to Hal's point, when it comes to alcohol establishments, the question was public need.
Yeah.
And Hal can correct me if you, but Hal testified in the ABCC, because we were, the Board of Selectmen was appealed to the ABCC when you denied an alcohol license because you had several alcohol licenses all within several hundred feet of each other here in downtown. You declined to issue an additional license, and the basis was in the general language of the bylaw or the state regulation, which was need. You found that the public did not need the additional convenience of that license, and so you declined it. And you were upheld by the ABCC. Now, this is different because it's cannabis. You know, at the end of the day, that's the lawyer in you, the capitalist in me says, get there first, win the race, establish your clientele, and win the competition. And that, that's where the pizza analogy is valid. How much variety could there ever be in pizza? And yet, if you polled the residents of the town of Douglas, you will get strong opinions on the three rival pizza shops that are all within 500 feet of each other, and most people won't go to the other unless the one they want is closed. And that's just the reality, and somehow, all three have managed to survive so far, knock on wood, COVID notwithstanding.
I'd also point out that Mr. Bonin's...
Before the town can have the vote, and let us present why, if we do some form of buffer zone, that the Board of Selectmen governs on a case-to-case basis, because, bottom line, we came to you in December. If we had known that come April, we would have somebody right at our backyard, we would have never spent a million dollars of the time. We came in to have a viable business. And now, if you put somebody right next to us, where's the longevity in that? Where's the longevity for the economy for that? Because if we're seeing 50, 50 people an hour, which is actually a grossly low number, because we're going to be moving people through every 10 minutes, how are you going to do that if pollings are being questioned again? You have to take this in consideration. How close can you better put it together and who's going to start?
Can I, can I counter the rationale that you have with that? Because as I recall, you looked at doing a second community host agreement for an additional marijuana facility, recreational use in the town of Douglas. And I believe my question directly pointed was, aren't you in fear of cannibalizing yourself? And the answer was, no, there's plenty of market for everyone.
Because it's clearly on the other side of the town. It's going to be pulled from a whole different side of the town. It's going to be pulled from Rhode Island and Webster, where we are is going to be pulled from the Uxverge and 146. This is from one end of town to the other, that's huge separate places. It doesn't matter who owns it, it's two separate things. But when you put somebody side by side, side by side, that doesn't work with the product. And this is not pizza, this is not liquor, which is something that your town doesn't even know how it's going to work. I'm the one taking the risk for this right now, to get this to work for the town or us. And now, what was even brought up in the meeting, that you have a responsibility to the people who came before you first, to have a viable business, when first came ahead, I do remember it being brought up on the 7th, if somebody asked about that. Do you have a responsibility to the people who came to you first? That's what you say, get there first, win the race, move on. Well, we're there, and we're going to be open this before the year ends, now on.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I think the board is sympathetic to what the arguments are, it's just I think there's a resistance to wanting to incorporate that into a bylaw, but certainly in our licensing procedure, we would take into consideration the things that you raise.
I mean, you're expanding on what you said earlier, Mr. Davis, and I would agree with that. I'd rather look at this on a case-by-case basis than try to put a bylaw in place that's going to limit us. And I have to be honest, I don't have anything concrete to put it on, but I think it's going to be a litigation magnet too. I really do. I mean, I understand what you're trying to accomplish, I think your point is well-taken, and I don't disagree with one thing you say, but I also think it may be a bit like killing a fly with a sledgehammer. It's, if we pass that bylaw, I think it's going to have ripples and I think it's going to have effects. Mr. Morse mentioned what might be an extreme example, but you have three similar food service places that literally you can hit with a rock from the middle of the street. So I don't know if having a bylaw with a buffer zone, even though you're trying to limit it to cannabis, I understand that. I'm not sure that it would be limited, and I'm not sure that it accomplishes what we want to accomplish.
Well, if we put it in as a bylaw, as we don't have any marijuana zones, we opted not to do zoning for a marijuana area, it would end up, by default, via retail ruling. So it would then impact every retail establishment.
I don't, I mean, perhaps, I don't know. I think it's going to limit things for the town. I think a bylaw like this is going to, and this is the first time I think we've considered anything like this. I think you're going to limit retail opportunities for the town, and I know nobody here wants to do that, and I'm sure you don't want to do that. I understand your concerns, and I think what Mr. Davis says is probably the best solution. We look at this on a case-by-case basis, and we as the selectmen, as the more-or-less ruling board here, use our inherent power to be able to say, well, there should be, in this case, more distance between retailers, for example, if that were the case.
I understand that, but you have to have something there that when people come before you to ask you for an exit. Right now, you have no more HCA's, or fewer than one, you only have two right now. You have the one article going throughout the town in your, in your meeting to get two more, but right now, you only have three. And there's plenty of room to leave right now, but not that close together. If there's no zoning, and they can go anywhere in the town, then there's plenty of room for all of us to have space. And what I'm getting at is if you don't want to put a buffer zone with a specific shortage, that's fine, but you still have to have something in the bylaws when they come before you that you have the right to adapt it. Otherwise, they can say, we didn't say that we're going to reject it because we're too close to somebody else. That's not in your bylaws.
We need a legal opinion on that.
It's not going to be transparent.
We need to get Mazen...
I think that's correct, we have the inherent power to take that into consideration if we're going to license another, have an agreement with another, another vendor.
Yeah, I tend to agree with Mr. Davis, but I think this is something we probably need an answer on.
Yeah, from Talaman's office, because that's the attorney that came in and did it, but my understanding on it was, is the town has the right of refusal on a license.
Right.
So you can give 500 community host agreements, and that's fine. That's not what gives you the right to operate a cannabis facility in Douglas. It's the license that's issued by the Board of Selectmen.
Correct.
And we have the right to either approve or deny that on whatever reasons we see fit. So the reason that we had moved up to having five as opposed to three is so that we match the amount of number of, the number of liquor licenses that we have to the number of marijuana licenses that we have, just so it's even even.
I don't, my, my feeling is that we don't need a separate bylaw to be able to exercise our power to issue or not issue a license or place conditions on somebody who comes in and applies for a license. I don't think that we need a bylaw to do that, but I think I want to have Mr. Talaman weigh in.
I can't remember the name of the lawyer that was with his firm, but she did all of the, she's dealt with, she works with the CCC on setting up all the licensing.
Correct.
So we can put this on the seventh agenda for a rediscussion and discovery, and at least get legal opinion from the people that helped us write the laws that we have in place in the first place. Does that make sense?
That makes sense to me. Mr. Davis?
Yes?
Does that make sense? We talk to Mr. Talaman and put this down for July 7th?
And if it's legal counsel's advice to do that, we have ample time to get it on the warrant if we have to.
Right.
When does the warrant close?
When does our town meeting warrant close, Matt?
I don't remember when you said it to close, I thought it was...
I thought it was in September.
No, no, the meeting's in September.
So it's in August, that would say that when we do our closing.
Yeah, I was, my mind's in a completely different place. I have to, because I went back and consulted, looked at the bylaw, the actual bylaw that was passed. And really, the rules and regulations around the issuance of licenses must be determined by the Board of Selectmen. So you can, the same way you, I think you would enact a policy with three readings, you can put rules and regulations around the issuance of licenses, which you probably want to do before you start getting applications for those licenses.
Right.
Is disclose, you know, the considerations that the board will, will ruminate over as you get applications one at a time. But there is, that specific language that's associated with liquor licenses around public need doesn't appear in the, in the bylaws passed.
So would it behoove us...
I thought you set their closing date at the end of July, because I thought we were going to give FinCom, oh, it's in the FinCom agenda for tonight, when they...
Oh, their flyer and...
Because they have to publish their flyer, it has to be at the post office, ready to go in advance of the mailing date so that we don't miss the mailing, give people the opportunity to review it right before the meeting. the opportunity to review it right before the meeting. That typically takes a couple of weeks, that kicks us at least into August. For FinCom to review the warrant and issue its opinions, its recommendations on each of the warrant articles is another couple of weeks, because they have to have a couple of meetings to do that. So really, I think you're looking at the end of July, if anybody wanted to petition anything on, they'd have to get moving pretty quickly.
So what I...
Still a window.
What I had suggested is have the attorney from, I think it was Talaman's office that helped us craft a lot of the stuff.
Let me get the exact date, I'll be right back, Jean's here.
So are we going to go through challenges at this, just to get permission to, first to the town to vote? Is that, I mean, why can't, why are we not just putting it to the town to vote?
Because if it doesn't need to go in and have a larger ripple effect in zoning, we would rather it didn't. If it's something that can fall under the purview of the Board of Selectmen based off of the language written as to, as to our cannabis licensing, it would probably be easier and preferred that way, so as not to have an impact later down the road on other retail businesses. And trying to put, you know, and trying to put anything like into a zoning rule specific to cannabis when we don't have a cannabis zone is kind of, it's really muddying the waters. So I want to try and make it as clean, as concise as I can.
No, you're absolutely right, I'm not looking to do anything with zoning, I'm looking for it to be strictly in the cannabis bylaws, governed under the law.
I mean, I think what you're saying is, just a rewording of what the town administrator said a little while ago, if we as the board essentially grant rules and regulations of what we're going to look at when we grant licenses, then I think certainly words that would amount to a buffer zone, parking concerns, traffic concerns, things like that, the distance away of any other business, I think are things that we could put in those rules and regulations.
Without having to go to town meeting.
Without having to go to town meeting, right.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, if we could just adopt it as a policy of the board, probably have a few others, that we, would be general guidance for us if we review these applications.
And I mean, certainly, we're not trying to do any harm to you opening your business at all, it's just a matter of, you know, we're trying to make sure that we make things as easy and simple as possible, not just for you, but for future businesses that try to come into Douglas. And I completely understand and empathize with your concerns, as you're looking to open up a new retail establishment and trying to do everything you can to make sure you're on the best possible foot when you open your doors.
I hear you, thank you.
And we definitely want to help, I just want to make sure that, you know, by helping you, we're not hurting others, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I don't want to hurt anybody else either, but just remember, by putting somebody through course to me and hurting me was absolutely hurting them too.
Agreed.
If you have some purpose in established areas, then we can all have longevity to operate this. And the reason why I really, I brought this up even more was because it came up in planning. Planning has a lot to say about the traffic.
Oh, I know, I, I sit and deal with all the, like, running the technology for the planning board meetings, and it's excruciatingly painful.
Well, you've been there, every time I've been, we've been there.
So just so everybody knows, there is a gap in time here. So the, the board reopened the warrant on June 2nd, you set the warrant to close July 7th, because you want to sign and post the warrant on August 4th, so that gives the FinCom time through July. And then on the 18th of August is the deadline to get the flyer to FinCom to vote on their recommendations. So that, that's the compressed timeframe, but right now, you've scheduled the warrant to close on July 7th.
Can we extend that if we so choose?
I think you have time between the 7th and the date you set to post it, because there's, I guess somebody, somebody who's done this forever will correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know that it makes a big difference. Like, if it's still open, the only thing that's true is that it has to be closed before it can be posted.
Right.
If you close it and then post it almost in the same meeting, or within a couple of days apart, it's fine, because you're just giving people that much more time to get access to the warrant. But in the final analysis, if they can't petition their way on, it's the board's warrant, you decide what goes on.
What's our timetable in establishing a policy? Do we have to do three readings?
That's not laid out, I'm going to assume that it is, because what else would it be?
That's how we've done everything else, three.
Yeah, I mean, you don't really have, in your policies and procedures as a board, you don't have separate things established for issuance of regulations versus a policy, it's all the same. Once you adopt the policy, it has the force of law, it sounds like a regulation to me.
Right.
So I think that's what, it's all in that same rubric.
Okay. I, I would still, like, one way or the other, this doesn't need to go to town meeting, because I don't think zoning is the way to go at it, I think it's a matter of a policy around licensing. I would still like on the 7th to have the attorney that assisted drafting this be able to dial in and kind of give us some guidance on how do we craft this policy and make sure that it's...
Right.
You know, it's solid and non-contestable, and it actually protects the businesses as well as the, as well as the town.
And it doesn't blossom into something that we're going to have to deal with down the road outside of cannabis, right?
Is that acceptable to you?
I'm, no, I'm all for what you're saying, I don't want, I'm not going to join, I'm going to the Board of Selectmen to control all this, absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, the, the other issue...
So are we, when you said you're going to go to the lawyer, and we'll get this all together by the 7th and next week or by...
Well, we're asking the lawyer to join us on the 7th to help us kind of craft our way through it, and then if, once we come up with language...
The language closes that night, can't we?
Yes. Yeah, once we have that language, we'd have to adopt the policy and then do three readings. So, and we meet every week.
We want a selectman to draft the policies to consider.
You have to stay on, I have a hard time hearing you. Hal, you always move your mic on, and it makes it very hard for me.
He's the world's most interesting selectman, that's why he does that.
He is, he is.
Yes, he is, he just needs a cigar now.
You just send him some peeps, he'll be super happy.
I, I think we've got a solution here that meets everybody's needs, and I think that's the, the policy for the board, so.
Yeah, so we'll...
We certainly want to talk to Mr. Talaman to make sure that we don't dig ourselves into a hole.
What, what was that attorney's name, do you remember?
Kate Fedorov.
Kate Fedorov.
That's right.
So, and she works very, very closely with the CCC on a lot of this, was my understanding, or at least it's...
Well, she's, she works in, at Talaman and Mead, and is, has been their lead counsel on cannabis issues for a long time.
So she's definitely the right person.
Yep.
All right, so we'll have her, we'll try and get her in for the 7th to help us craft up a policy that makes sense and is enforceable, and then if we're all in agreement on that, then we'd have to embrace that and do three readings of it, and then it would become so, is my understanding.
I think so, I think...
I could not ask for more, thank you so much.
My pleasure. All right, is there anything else that wasn't anticipated with proper notice?
Me.
Are you all set? Okay, I would...
I'm good. I do the mic back and forth so that way nobody gets interference, that's why it takes a second for me to come on.
Not a problem.
But no, I'm great, thank you so much, everyone.
All right.
Have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
I'll see you on the 7th, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second it. Oh, Mike seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye.
Morse, aye. Have a good night, everyone.